Next, we'll go ahead and do our MSBA monthly report.
Hello everyone and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of March. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at MSBA's recent legislative forum in Jefferson City where nearly 300 school board members and administrators participated. One of the speakers at the event was the President of the State Board of Education, Charlie Shields, who said the state must place a high priority on early childhood education since the education of a three-year-old is as important as the education of a third grader. He also touched on the issue of charter schools, saying current charter school laws in Missouri are a mismatch of accountability.
Now, I believe that there is a role for charter schools in the state of Missouri, but we need to have workable laws and better understand what it takes to make charter schools successful. And I think that discussion has to take place before any discussion about expansion of charter schools occurs in the state.
Shields also said closing poorly performing charter schools has proven to be difficult under current laws. There are currently several bills moving in the General Assembly that would expand charter schools beyond St. Louis and Kansas City where they currently exist. MSBA believes charter schools should be authorized by local boards of education and held to the same accountability standards as traditional public schools. Shields also urged school board members and administrators to tell legislators about the great things going on in Missouri's public schools.
You hear this in the Capitol from all these sources that say, "Public education is failing our state." But the one thing that is always common that people say that public education is failing our state is they usually have an economic interest in the solution. Okay? So that's why the cry is "public education is failing" because you have to create a crisis, you have to say something is failing, or you can have a solution, and most people creating the solution have an economic interest in that solution. So your job is to spread the good word about public education.
Another speaker at the legislative forum, Dr. Tim Hodges of the Gallup Organization, said, "Research shows creating a positive school culture and climate will not only help keep teachers from leaving the profession, but also will result in better student performance." He said, "Better salaries and benefits are needed to attract people to teaching, but creating a positive school climate where teachers are engaged can keep teachers in the classroom."
Less turnover, teacher shortage problem, much greater environment that causes people to want to stay rather than one that causes them to consider when they're going to leave. And how about engagement of our students, of our parents, another big difference. If teachers are engaged, that rubs off on everybody in the school community and the broader community as well.
Hodges added that, "Research is clear that a positive school climate contributes to academic achievement and decreases the negative influence of poor socioeconomic background characteristics and other risk factors related to academic achievement." Following presentations on legislative issues, board members and administrators attending the legislative forum had the opportunity to visit with legislators from their home areas at the Capitol. Once again this year, a feature of the legislative forum was the Student Showcase. Students from more than a dozen school districts set up displays in the Capitol Rotunda to show off some of the innovative programs and projects in Missouri's public schools. The showcase included students from the Knopf Doster School District who designed a plastic switch cover now being used in the B-2 bombers based at Whiteman Air Force Base to prevent possible in-flight emergencies, as well as students from the Riverview Garden School District who helped develop and open a school-based health clinic for students. We thank all the students who participated in this year's Student Showcase. MSBA will be hosting another Student Showcase during this fall's annual conference. MSBA's spring regional meetings are coming up in April and May. A meeting is held in each of MSBA's 17 regions in the state. It's a great opportunity to network with your colleagues from your area of the state and to share ideas. Topics for this year's spring regional meetings will vary by region. You can find out more about your regional meeting and register for the meeting by visiting the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Our regional meeting is April 22nd. It's in West Platteville. If you are interested in going to that, please let Mrs. Sterling know and we will arrange transportation. I will be attending. Okay?
Next, we'll have our David Board Spotlight.
We have a student group we would like to honor and a leader of that student group, Mrs. Julie Taylor, our high school librarian. Ms. Taylor, would you ask her out? We've talked about Mrs. Taylor more than once in the board meeting. We've talked about her website that Mrs. Taylor takes care of. If you need something done, you take it to the library, you ask her to take care of it, and it's done. She does a phenomenal job and has been doing National Honor Society and senior class since I was here the first time. So, a long time. Those are things that she just takes care of. But our National Honor Society had a big honor this spring in being able to put in a lot of work. I'd like for Mrs. Taylor to talk about that.
We attend the Missouri State Association National Honor Society every year. There's about 25 schools with about 300 student attendees this year with 40 different advisors. And we choose the theme as President School and organize all the speakers, organize the State Service Project. Our President, Stephen Copeland, couldn't be here tonight because of track. Our Vice President, Ethan Little, also had track. So a member who did a lot to help Arina stepped up. We worked with our theme, Stephen chose the honor. He's born in the military, it means something to him. So we went to Missouri Veterans Association, the homes, and asked them what they needed. And they needed electric razors, and they needed padded wheelchair covers for the arms. And so we worked with Peace and Friendship Guild, Dogwood Wolfie down there, and they made, I can't remember now, I just had a number, but at least 50 pairs. I'll be taking them out for ends soon. And we collected over 20, I would say closer to 25 electric razors that we'll be taking. Arina helped with one of the workshops. She, we did paracords, Operation Gratitude. Lots of paracords made. They send them to not only military people, but they send them to first responders and stuff as a thank you and hopefully someday a tool. We had quite a few veterans from here. We had Dick Thomas, he's from Mansfield. We had Bill Henry and Judge Carter from Ava. They came and presented at the workshop and they were very helpful and informative. Our main speaker was Art Jackson, and the kids really liked him. He was very enthusiastic, and he worked in workshops too, one-on-one on the kids. As far as the, we also had to do the goodie bags. That's where a lot of the kids really stepped up. We had to make the paracord kits. So we did, they did a lot of work, and I'm glad it's over now.
We just want to thank you and National Honor Society for what you do for Ava, obviously, and the publicity around the state.
Yeah, we've gone, I think we've gone a state conference, I'm guessing at least 12 or 13 years, and there's only one year we haven't held at office. And so the kids like getting up there, and you have to perform a skit, and they enjoy making fun of themselves and having a good time. So President School's the most glorious.
Okay, let's get the picture.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our community spotlight. We have two boards in the mosh that have been on the board for three years and have chose not to, did not choose to re-up and run. We want to thank them for their service. It's not always a pleasant job. It pays a lot to be on the Board of Education, but obviously Mr. Strong's not here. He's watching his granddaughters for Strickland, but we would like to thank Mr. Tredway for his service to the Board of Education.
All right, next, we'll go ahead and do our principal graduate reports, and Dr. Hall.
Good yesterday, did you okay, man? We got an ice oven set up distributed. Thank you to Bobby and his guys for helping get it from the maintenance building over to elementary. Mrs. Tao and Mrs. Rita, we're contacting parents. We had some teacher volunteers to have the school to help distribute that. Kenny Chapman, Rachel Swafford, Esther Carl is a team effort, and Greg fundraiser personally.
Swafford's supervising.
Dr. Nash is supervising. Mr. Hall, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I have nothing to add.
Mrs. Swafford.
Erica King with vocational rehabilitation has been coming in and visiting with our seniors. She comes once a month. She works with them on repairing the transition plan for after graduation. She got those nine seniors, I think, last week. She helps them whether they want to enter the workforce or go on to college. And it's been a very good program. And there's some funding available for students to help them, and we always encourage every student to participate in that. And again, it's been a good program, and she's from Ava, so it's nice to have her on here working with our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
We still, we had some strong rims, we had some damage, mostly to our shoe roofs, often over here in our houses. After the insurance company, the rest will be here tomorrow at 11:00. I feel we may have to replace a few roofs, but we'll wait to see when, when it comes.
Thank you. Okay, so, yep, I have several things. Talked about in our MSBA report, the charter bill and voucher bill that's in the legislature. The charter bill that's in the House died for a lack of votes. They didn't bring it to the floor. They went to the Republican Caucus and knew that they were going to be short on votes, so it never moved at this point, so that's good. It doesn't, we don't anticipate it moving. The voucher bill that's in the Senate is on the informal calendar. We'll see where that goes at this point, but Senator Cunningham did not think it was going to come up. We have a meeting on April 1st with Senator Cunningham and several superintendents from our area to just, to talk about those things, our representatives. Dr. Estling, who's our state representative, is going to attend that meeting as well. So we have a good relationship with our legislators, and it's easy to get ahold of them. Actually, Dr. Estling has called me several times this spring just to get our take, give schools' take on a few different topics, so we appreciate that. I think I talked last month a little bit about Transpar and the study that they are doing. Talked to him last week. Things are progressing. I know the transportation group has talked to him as well. I think you talked to him at your last meeting, correct, Mr. Vincent? So he's progressing through that. We look to get a report from him, probably sometime in April, early May, we thought was his target timeline. Spring sports has started. Middle school softball's first game tonight, first high school track meet tonight, and our baseball team is 2-1, and they are currently, are playing now. So it is a busy time of year. Music contest, just finished district contest for band and choir. They were actually slated to come this month, but there was a conflict, so they're going to, it's Music and Education Month this, in March, so they're going to come next month, and they're going to talk about all the exemplary performances and ones that they received. So I don't want to blow their bubble, but Mrs. Sacco and Mr. Sack, they just do, those guys do an outstanding job with their programs. So we'll be excited to hear from them. Our district attendants, I know the flu has been going around and that's been a concern, but our district attendance has remained strong. We've had some days where we dipped into the 80s, but overall, we've stayed over 90%. We have been in contact with the Health Department, our nurses contacted them. If there's any issues, or they contact us if they have concerns, but overall, we've remained strong. Like I said, some days have been better than others. Our state bus inspections were last week and this week. Our contractors worked really hard. We had a in-house inspection the week prior. It had been, it was the third reschedule because of snow days, but they worked really hard to get ready for that. As you remember, our in-house inspections, they actually perform those inspections themselves. We have some experts in that contractor group that really know what they're doing when it comes to the mechanics on a bus, so they guide everybody else through it. We've developed a checklist for them to go through, and then we give that back to the driver or the contractor so they know what those issues are. So I'm proud to announce that 26 contracted buses inspected. We had zero out of service. We had four that were defective, and I would argue that a couple of those shouldn't have been defective, but they were. We had one that a mechanic actually put the tie rod end on with the bolts hanging down, and it is the rule that the bolts have to be up. Wasn't the contractor that did it, it was a mechanic. That's a little odd. Didn't take any time to fix, but it's a little odd. And I would say, somebody in the audience would argue that their tie rod end did need to be fixed as well. But, very happy, 84.6% pass rate. So that's up about 20%. Something that, if there is an issue, and the driver pulls it out, so seats are always an issue. So if the driver pulls it out, gets it fixed, and has it reinspected before the inspectors leave that day, it just goes on as a, they call it a advisory. Think, is that right, Larry?
Yes.
It's just an advisory. So it's not defective and it's not out of service, just advisory. But if my numbers are correct, we had an 84.6% pass rate. District buses, we had, had an 87.5% pass rate. We had one bus that the inspector crawled underneath and had the broken spring. The supervisor couldn't find it. It had been, apparently they believed they missed it for the last couple of years. You couldn't see it until you looked at the very end, and it didn't have enough coming out the end. So we did miss that. That's been fixed. Everything else passed. So 87.5 for the district, 84.6 for the contractors. We're pretty happy with that. Always looking to improve. Something that we're going to do, Supervisor Wood has offered that he will come in July. It's a slow time and whole workshops, hour, hour and a half workshops for five to six contractors and our people at the same time. And he'll go through point by point what he is looking for at every stage on that bus. So we think that'll even help even more. We can have some actual conversation. You don't get to have a lot of conversations when there's five of them swarming the bus. So, but we think that'll lead to some more conversations and maybe some more clarity in some things that they're looking for. Mr. Vincent, do you have anything to add?
I would like to commend the drivers for good participation, and we had good help. And it really made, it really made work, our end of work very smooth. I anticipate that buses become newer, the challenge being greater because there's more electronics and safety devices that are added, roof hatches, various windows, various things that are really a challenge, the room conditions and the dust and water we had contemplated. But it was, it was a good event, very positive for us.
Thank you. Financials. So, running pretty level, finance, financials, if you'll move, just move over to March. You'll see that, we talked about our weighted ADA, and that fluctuates. I make some adjustments on that as we go throughout the year. We had a few drop in numbers, so I dropped that a little bit for March just to be conservative. But our SAT, State Adequacy Target, should be a line three, has hit what they anticipate, what the funding level was at 6308, so we feel really good about that. So we're above budget, we're above budget and ready. I'm pretty comfortable about where we are. Transportation dollars are remaining the same. Prop C dollars are down a little bit this month. It must have been a slow shopping month last month, or I guess that would be January, because that's actually January's receipts. So, things are good right now. I'm pretty comfortable where we are. Any questions about any of that?
Thank you. Mr. Dog.
All right, well, I talked a whole lot last month about our assessment scores, and we finally got to you. Currently, teachers, students, kind of getting into that time of the school year, preparing for those. Doing some practice runs on the technologies, making sure everything is up and ready to go. So, something we're working towards, getting ready for. Something else, somebody probably got an email from me earlier this week, you were going to talk about federal programs, talked about that most months, but we always send out surveys in the spring of the year gathering feedback. It's just very, really got to do it in phases to get information back and guidance. What you'll see coming out later on, we ask the volunteers to come attend meetings, actually serve on committees as we go through that feedback, look at our data, demographics, assessment, information, just a lot of data along with that feedback, because we try to build our budget for next year with those federal programs, those federal funds. So it'll be something that we'll be working towards as we move on into the spring. The other thing I wanted to talk about, you know, Mrs. Swafford and Dr. Nash aren't here, they put in quite a bit of timeline in this. Also, School Resource Officer, Brandon Reed, and Becky Gann from Missouri, who's our community head. In our fall parent-teacher conference, you know, we're always looking for ways and opportunities to get parents in and share what we think might be relevant information, you know, issues we're facing. And Miss Becky and Brandon really put together a lot of information this spring and gotten some feedback on dangers and risks, vaping and these things. It's probably something you've seen, read articles and, I mean, news, just in the news quite a bit. And they had worked to put together a presentation to share with parents. You know, we do things with students in the health classes and some of that education, the risks and things to watch for. You know, we've done a lot of work trying to figure out, all right, what's the best way to get that information out there, let folks know what's going on, where they can come to, what that will look like. So we've done all that work, and we get to that night, and it turned out just wasn't what we wanted it to be. But I say all that to say this, while we're there, Dr. Nash recorded that and posted it on the school Facebook page. So I think at the time we were a little bit discouraged, thinking, you know, what can we do better to try to get that out to more people? Well, I think about 10 o'clock the next morning, there were over 730 people that watched that. From that, Becky told me today, this Becky Gann, she's been contacted by other schools and have seen that, it's been pushed on to them. So that information is getting out there. You know, we hope we get to the point where, you know, folks are comfortable coming in and being able to ask questions, you know, because Brandon and Becky are great resources on that. In any of the, you know, these presentations that we try to host. So that was a good thing. Got that information out there, so now people are going to be able to get that and share that with their students and, you know, parents, just to be aware of what the risks and dangers are. So I want to share the work that they have done on that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and go into our action and discussion items. Special education review.
I'll just hit some of the highlights. We have a copy. From 1718 school year, we had 22 students in our early childhood special education program. 19 of those, or 86.4% were with their typically developing peers, so the other three typically are, they're at home, their parents choose to remain for services. On our math scores, we had 100% of our students participating. They had an IEP. 19.4% of those met an ELA, which is slightly above the state average. 13.2% of them met in math, which is slightly below the state average. So that is an area we're going to focus on. I think Mr. Dalton and I are, and Mrs. Swafford, she'll come in my meeting at some point. So that was, 14.1% was the state target for that. We had 11 students that graduated, 88.9% of them. And of the students that we had graduated, we had seven that are either continuing in their education or in the workforce at this time, which is 87.5%. Again, we would like to see that higher, that one student, we would like to see them employed, which is where vocational rehabilitation can come into, and the transition planning from our teachers. Some of the other notes, district-wide, we have, right now at this point, 36 early childhood special education students. That is up 14 over last year at this time. 12 of those will be going into kindergarten next year. We have 106 district-wide students receiving speech and language services. I broke it up. 52 receive other services. 54 of those are only speech and language. That's another area we're seeing an increase in students receiving speech or, and or language services. Some strengths of the program, all the staff works very diligently to meet the academic, social, and behavior needs of all of our students. That's a big area. It's not just academics, it's preparing them socially and behaviorally with their peers. They're knowledgeable, they're dedicated. Some weaknesses, lack of resources, and sensory guidance. Sensory is an area that we're seeing a greater increase and need for. Recommendations that came up when surveyed, daycare, autism classroom, we're seeing some more instances of those. Sensory rooms in each building, or more resources for the special education classrooms to address those needs. A full-time early childhood and special education preschool program, additional speech implemented to help with the going case loads, and additional reading stuff in those programs for the specialized program. Any questions?
Thank you. So, motion to approve the special education review. Troy makes the motion in a second. Michael seconds, any discussion? All of us in favor? There is a five of them. Next, we'll have our health service program review.
How are you, man?
What is well. I'm fine.
Wendy Bruck, she's our elementary nurse. She does a great job. We have a new nurse at the middle school, Brittany Davis, but she's sick today. Here has children. I'm not sure. One of them is sick. So Wendy is on her own today.
So you should all have a copy of mine as well. Our overall program average was a 4.5 out of 5, our highest being tied between number three, the board policies that exist to govern our program, and number eight, our organization of our program. Our lowest, weakest point was adequate funding. That's always what we score the lowest on. In our comments, they... She came from Gainesville. We also started a new service through Cox Health that is located in my office and we have Nurse Lindsay Wade, who we were lucky enough to get an R in for that position. It didn't require one, but we ended up with her and she works there twenty hours per week. And the only real big issue, we feel like we'd see more patients if we were Cox Health covered. Our insurance is St. John's.
Which is changing for next year. You'll be able to make a choice.
That's awesome.
You'll be able to see Cox or Mercy.
Well, that'll probably make a
That's going to open up.
... impact in the amount of patients that she sees. She does stay busy over there and we feel like, as with any new program, they start out slow, but they build momentum with each year. And this is really something that's going to be our future anyway. We're all going to see our doctors on our phone eventually. We're never going to go there at first in one of these days. So that is about all I have unless you all have any questions. This, last week, this week, we did see it slow down as far as the number of people of viewers and throwing up, so I am really hopeful that that's behind us as soon as Brittany comes back.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to vote to approve the health services program review. Troy makes a motion, Kenny seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? There is a five-oh. Next, approval cell, bus route number one. We have a request from Sandra Harville. If you remember, we transferred the ownership from Gary, passed away to his wife Sandra last month, and we have a request from Sandra to sell the rights to contract bus route number one. She would like to sell that route to Lance Stills. Lance has met all the requirements to drive a bus for the Abbot School District. He currently drives one at Plainview. So it's my recommendation to approve the sale from Sandra Harville to Lance Stills. So we need a motion to approve this sale. Michael makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Kenny seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? There is a five-oh. Calendar adjustments. Do you want to discuss that?
Bad luck, unfortunate timing. Well, we have, because of snow days, you know, we had some PD days built into our calendar this year. We already missed our last one due to weather. April eighth is scheduled to be a snow makeup day currently. That was our next PD day. Several things scheduled for that day is a PD day. Health risk assessment for staff, which for our insurance is really
Mandatory that we, that we offer.
There you go.
And the percentage, we're going to be mandated that we have a certain percentage to participate at some point.
We do, our intentions do all of our training. Every year, our staff, our proctors, our state assessments have to go through training. We've got that scheduled for that day, just in addition to some other PD things that we've got planned for that day. Feedback from the buildings is teachers would like to have that data, meet with their groups, review as they prepare. So we would like to leave that day as a PD day.
In May fifteenth.
That could seem to be, which is one of our snow makeup days. All we do is map out a certain number. We'd like to keep the eight as that PD day and add that one to the
Just takes a change. So I need a motion to vote to adjust the eighteen nineteen calendar as presented. Michael makes a motion, have a second. Kenny seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? There is a five-oh. Next, I have the OPA reveal. This is a yearly March agenda item. This is the fourth year of our five-year current contract with OPA. I gave you some information last month, but we've had some new information as we, as we've moved from the last board meeting to this board meeting. I am recommending to approve the renewing the contract for next year. OPA has agreed to leave the current pricing that we have for eighteen nineteen to extend that to nineteen twenty, so there'll be no increase in pricing. And we'll see about a two percent, we usually see about a two percent increase in reimbursement, so that should help close that gap. And they've also started the open to go at the high school and middle school, which kids like. They're doing it four days a week now instead of just one or two days a week. I do plan on a request from several board members to spend time over the next few months visiting other schools, talking to other vendors to see if we can provide a quality product at a reduced price, at a reduced expense to the district. We really would like to break even or come as close as possible. We'd like for the quality to be, to be there as well. And that's a conversation I've had with, I've met with three different OPA people from corporate OPA in the last thirty days. And I'll provide that information as I gather it in the next couple of months to the board, but it is my recommendation to approve the fourth year of the five-year contract with OPA at this time. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the OPA reveal as presented. Kenny makes a motion, have a second.
I'll say.
Michael seconds, all those in favor? Got four, those against. Mr. Tredway, motion carries four to one. Next, we have the summer school two thousand and nineteen dates. It is scary that we're this close to summer school two thousand and nineteen. So we've, we extended summer school three years ago to six weeks. We've got good feedback from that. So we're planning to continue that six-week schedule. The first, it'll start May twentieth, go through May thirty-first. We're going to be kindergarten through sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade through high school, will be completion of credit, credit recovery if they need to. Six, or June third through June twenty-eighth will be K-12. It'll run from eight to two-thirty. So for that twenty, twenty days, we will feed breakfast and lunch, will be free to all students through a program that we apply for. Busing will remain the same depending on the numbers. We always have that chance for our numbers that are riding, the buses drop, we could eliminate a bus. Remember, those are our buses, but we have some contractors, our current contractors that drive for us in the summer and we will continue that process. Teachers are developing their summer school class proposals and we will start signing up for some, summer school very shortly. Motion to vote to approve the summer school two thousand and nineteen dates as presented. Michael makes a motion, Troy seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? There is a five-oh. Just a reminder that our reorganization meeting after the April election will be April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six fifteen. And our regular board meeting, that's a different date, that's a Tuesday, will be April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty. I need a motion to Michael makes a motion, have a second. Kenny seconds, all in favor? There is a five-oh. Just a reminder that our reorganization meeting after the April election will be April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six fifteen. And our regular board meeting, that's a different date, that's a Tuesday, will be April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty. I need a motion to Michael makes a motion, have a second. Kenny seconds, all in favor? There is a five-oh. Thank you, guys. For sure.
I will miss you, though. Keep in touch. We'll keep in touch. Good work for your Thanks for all you do, man. Did a good job.
You didn't like the clock, John?
No. When I came in, I thought, I know it's not. I heard you.
Yep.